Welcome to the Floyd County Board of Education regularly scheduled meeting September 23rd, 2019 in Adams Middle School. Call this meeting to order. I like the roll call to show that all school board members are present except for Dr. Chandra, she is out of town. Next would be to review the goals of the Floyd County School System. It would be to be a five-star school district, be transition-ready at 80 percent, to remain physically solid, to have an ACT average of 19.5, and to have an attendance rate of 95.5 percent. I'd like to remind everyone that if you would like to address the school board, there's a clipboard on the table there. I'm going to need you to sign it and fill it up for us. And our policy, not necessarily policy, but our practice is that we give you five minutes to speak, and if there's anything that we need to get back to you on, that we'll try to do that in writing within five days. Next is the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Rowe, do you have a student to lead the pledge of allegiance for us?
Ms. Molly Duncan.
Molly?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome. Thank you to the choir, the Almost Choir, as Ms. Markham said. That was an amazing job. It was very nice. Thank you. And next is a moment of individual silent. I'd like for us to reflect as to why we are here. Next is the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Atkins, do you have anything?
I do. I have one item I would like to add to the agenda, and I think it should be Q, if I'm not mistaken. It's to approve or consider Clerk Chris Wong to have access to the use of any schools. We have election coming up, so have access to schools as needed for voting purposes. I think right now he has access to a couple, just in case something were to come up, he would have access to a school for voting purposes. So it would be to approve or consider Clerk Chris Wong to have access to use any school as needed for voting purposes.
I need a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of Q, access to schools for Clerk Wong for voting purposes. I'll make the motion. Linda makes the motion. I need a second.
Second.
Second, motion passed. Agenda is adopted. Next is fallout on student staff and community achievement. Ms. Kim Cottle.
Good evening.
Good evening. Tonight we have a couple of recognitions that are athletic in nature, and it's golf. But what I want to tell you about is if you've never been to a golf meet, you should go. These kids play when it is, I don't know, 95, 100 degrees out there is what it feels like. They play in a rain, as long as it's not lightning. One time I remember it was quite cold when they were playing after it rained. So I was kind of impressed. It was a little bit more to it maybe than I realized before. So I guess I was thinking of Saturday afternoons and nice weather. That's not always what they get to play in. This first recognition, this young man, this is his third time, and he qualified for the state all A. He was first in individuals, and he was third overall. And this is Prestonsburg High School student Mason Cutton.
I was going to say Mason's kind of like Bigfoot. I hear a lot about him, but I could never get up with him. Because he was the all A regional winner.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. You were working that night because I was looking at you at volleyball game, but I said you were working.
And then we have, this is, I believe, the second year in a row these ladies have won the 15th region all A, and that is Prestonsburg High School girls' golf.
Good evening.
Good evening. Been a few years since I've done this. I'd like to thank everybody for coming to Adams Middle School tonight. Would also like to thank, this is my first year at a middle school in this capacity. As you all know, I spent several years in administration. Glad to be back in. Glad, blessed to have Mr. Moon with me, he's my assistant, and also blessed that the staff has been so welcoming to us as we've come through, and we're trying to make changes that this will be best for Adams Middle School as we move forward. So if you look at the PowerPoints we go through, we have an enrollment, I think it's at 336. This presentation was put in a couple weeks ago, tenet rate at 95.78, which is almost, it's a little bit over 1 percent higher than this time last year. And I think that is due to the change in culture that we're making, the positive interactions we're making with the kids. We're out front every day, welcoming kids when they come in. Three were just launched, numbers had actually went up to 63.1 percent, and we're still around 16 percent having students with special needs. When this goes through, the part on the slide that said, tell something that people may not know, and no doubt can make up for Adams Middle School, since it's inception, I think, in 1991, this school has, has Clark Elementary, maintenance, and right now we're housing Gera, Head Start, and anybody else that wants to come in. We've got a couple more rooms, I think. Vision, vision, the goals. This is, you know, we've got the motto, vision and mission up there, but the biggest thing for us is we're being the pathfinder from middle to high school, as they go on to first with high school, to make them successful and publish a career. We're doing whatever we can with opportunities and providing a high-class education. You know, if we move forward, we're making the needed changes that will make that happen. Academic goals, I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing that we can't release tests and work up now, but our goal is to definitely reduce knowledge percentages, improve achievement for students with disabilities, and get kids college and career prepared. And that's going to be just providing opportunities for them to be able to make the right, get on the right track when they get into high school, you know, to try to figure out what they're going to do when they get there. Strategies involved in this, how we're going to reach the goals is, of course, RTI, rigorous instruction, enrichment, give them different opportunities in enrichment, high expectations and positive interactions and relationships, gear up, college experiences. We're blessed to have gear up in the building. It seems like we have a lot of ideas, just about every day that comes to us with, and we love that because if we can get the college experiences to them, that will, you know, allow a lot of students to decide that they really want to do that in their career pathway. We were sitting in Mr. Moon's office today, and I've got to share his web student that had been in trouble a couple times, actually in Elbow once, he's a football player, and he come into the office because they had done dyslexia reading session, and he completed his. And he come in and had to tell Mr. Moon and myself that he had completed his, and that he'd been doing his work, and actually gone nicely. So that's the, that's the kind of relationships we're trying to build with the kids, and we can be, and we talked about this, and I'm probably going off topic, which I probably will do at this thing, but when we were sitting back there reading, you need to get the relationships where you can be hard on kids, but they respect you enough that they're going to come and be proud of when they get something done. So that's, that's where we're at, and we're, me and Mr. Moon are on the same page, I think on 99 percent of the things. And, you know, it's just, it's a great time to be at Adams Middle School. The staff is fantastic, and, you know, we're trying to move through and get these kids ready for the next chapter of their life. As we go to college and career readiness, eighth graders attend guards right now for the first quarter, two days per week. Gera is already planning a college visit and visit to the Toyota plant in North Town. Every year we do an entrepreneur fair, and it is fantastic. Ms. Markham does a great job, just like he did with the Almost Choir. I gave them almost three days to get ready for this, so I think he did an excellent job in getting them prepared, and I really look forward to our All County Choir if this is a couple of days. The college career day that we will host at the school in the spring. Also, we're going to be completing learning play, those different levels of college and career STEM activities. I know we have to do the, or the, my opinion, it's what I call computer science content, but we're going to add to it. Lot of cool things on the end. Gap and bro, strategies with this, we're still, we can't release much on this, but, you know, co-teaching, resource tutoring, use of different computer programs that we can use to individualize student instruction, put them on a level where they're going to be successful. Goals, specific skills, manipulatives, sit team discussions. The sit team meets in my office on Thursdays, every other Thursday, two times a month, and the discussion they have is just fantastic. It's all about students, it's all about what tiers we're moving around, and, you know, we've got great discussion through the whole, through the whole meeting. We actually right now have Christian Appalachian Project, have bring tutors every Tuesday that help throughout the, they'll pull kids, and they'll help them reading the math, so that's helping us out a lot. They'll pull groups of, you know, small groups, and try to give them the extra skills that they need. And PLCs, we talk about kids, which is our number one priority, and then we look at assignments and assessments also to see, you know, where we're assessing kids. Graduation rate, for us, it's making sure they're on a great level when they get out of here, make sure that the instruction is great level appropriate, vertical alignment with the high school and with the Elmister School, making sure everything is there, and give them multiple opportunities for the kids. I think the biggest thing is making sure the kids have the opportunities to, you know, learn at a higher level. I know we've got a couple sixth graders that go to seventh grade math, it's when the bell rings, they head there. We've got seventh graders in Algebra I, sixth graders going to bring out for us, so, you know, we're trying to bring that across. Literacy, intentional literacy instruction, use of dyslexia reading, and an increased focus on RTI, language arts. Dyslexia reading is a program, and we use it to individualize, to differentiate where the students are. Grade level teams, that has students move in and out in enrichment classes, reinforce literacy to small group, ESS tutoring, and we always use data as we took the first round of the cert test today. We'll finish it hopefully with everybody that's not absent by Wednesday evening. Achievements and opportunities, Sarah Springer qualified for state in arts and humanities. Dylan Shannon was a district math beat champ. The A-team, girls' basketball was county champs, and that was a three feet from them. C-team girls won the county championship. SCLP went to state. Dance team, as usual, has more goals than Mr. T. Kedico Regional Jazz Prop and Grand Champion, and then Kedico State Prop Champion. We also have KYA, SCLP, and math counts also. My goal, when I started, I think mid-July, when I got the job, there was about three weeks, I think, when I started. I started on Wednesday, I think it was three weeks. And if you look at the campus, it's changed some, we've actually got some grass growing, but we're trying to get everything where it's welcoming to parents, students, board members, community when they come through. But the biggest thing for us is student success in whatever aspect it is, and we're, I think I speak for Mr. Moon, when we both got here and we were ready to roll, we started at that point moving forward, not looking backwards.
I'd like to say that I can see a change just by what time I've been in the doors just for the last hour, so I hope I'm communicating for such a short time period, it hasn't been changed that you had, and the impact that you had. And I'd like to welcome Ms. Moon to the Floyd County and Adams Middle School district.
Oh yeah, Ms. Robinson, this is Mr. Moon.
Nice to meet you. Anybody have any questions? Or comments?
I've got a couple of comments. I got caught you on Facebook the other day. One page, a picture of you out there, and said, how many principals come to work early and help do a little landscaping around the building? Yeah, when we make it more enticing and inviting to our communities and our students, then, you know, we win a big part of the battle right there, getting them to door, make them happy to come in. I want to touch on one other thing, and I think Ms. Robinson knows this, she's called us, but we had discussed, you talked about the, well, I think we call it Floyd County Early College and Career Navigators that go up to, go up to our Floyd County Area Technical Center, and they do that as eighth graders. We received a letter from a parent whose child wasn't being successful in school, had no desire to be successful in school. Well, upon his trip last year up to the technical school, she thought it'd be a one-time deal, and he'd lose interest or whatever. He got to go on, I guess for four weeks, picked up a love for electricity, and made a deal with us, if you can get me into that technical school as a freshman, we won't miss school, we'll do this, we'll do that. And right now, he's opening up his hands to the bargain, and we've helped to change a lot, and that's what we're here for. So.
I'd like to say that Adams opened with the beginning of Karen. So we all know that it's been in for a little while. How long it's been in, and I called here the first two years it was open, so I just wanted you to know that, because you'd think I've been everywhere. I've been everywhere, been around a while, so I just want you to know that.
And I have said, this is where I did my student teaching. Angela Conlon was here when I did my student teaching. Jennifer West was here when I did my student teaching. And James Burrows, making a statement, social studies. But thank you guys, we certainly appreciate it.
Great job.
We got a call.
I should have checked.
I think that's wrong. Wow. We've never been to Mr. Ridge. Go ahead, never mind. I'll just brush my face.
I want to apologize, I left archery off of our activities list, and they have been world-renowned by the guidance of Mr. Holiday and Mr. Markham.
They've been to Nashville, both years that I've been here.
Archery, yeah.
So that is my apology. I didn't want it on Facebook.
Only person I would like to warm, Andrew Coleman. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Last meeting, and we had just a space away, schools represented were days, South Floyd Elementary and Prestonsburg Elementary. Teachers from those schools were there. Our guest speaker was Katie President, Katie Campbell, so I hoped for a big crowd, but we did not have a big crowd. We talked about upcoming events, we want to participate at the college with trunk or treat on October 29. We did change the ACT for scholarship. We changed it from 21 to 20, so we'll get that new information out to all the schools and make sure all the guidance counselors at the high school have that.
Was there a reason that you all decided to lower it?
We thought we could give more kids more opportunity, because we want scholarship, not necessarily be the straight A, going to get everything kind of scholarship student, you know? So we thought it would open it up a little bit. Mr. Campbell did suggest that the local president meet with superintendents and the board for Plan A and Plan B for after November and in January when the budget session starts. And I think that's about it. I guess the only thing left, we are going to do some phone banking, I'm not sure on the dates, so if anybody wants to participate off of those dates, I'll email, anybody in this room or not in this room that wants to participate. And last but not least, I know another more president faces coming, I just feel it. I just feel it. I know it's going to go well, and I just feel it, it's coming. No, I'm more serious now, though, and I think I talked to the chairman about this when we met last month, if there's any grant monies available or anything, I'd love to see a counselor at every single school, we have so many students in a variety of living choices.
We're going to increase some of that budget with, you know, with the new, I guess the new KRS about school safety, we're hoping to see to increase some of it up in the budget, so hopefully that will.
But also, isn't that the South Bay Council on how we need to...
It is council management structure.
They have, they make that decision, they can choose to have a guidance counselor or do assistant principals or a principal, you know, they can figure any way they want to with the budgets that they give.
Well, I know, I know that's what my principal said, money, I was just thinking, with the school's sake, either way, they've changed the law, I think that there might be grant monies available or, and maybe out there, so.
We hope, yeah, we hope that they...
Hope they fund.
Yeah, hope they fund.
Right. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Were there any students who wish to address the board? Parents, PTA, PTO? South Bay Councils? Classified employees? Certified employees? Principals Association? Any members of the Board of Education? And anyone else that may have been left off? All right, we'll move on. Next of four is receive attendance and plans enrollment and health aid service report. Does anybody have any questions regarding that report? Need a motion to receive the report?
I'll make the motion.
I need a second. I'll see. Any opposed? Motion passed. Next is five A. Next is receive the report as superintendent. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Atkins regarding the report? Mr. Atkins, do you have any comments that you'd like to add?
I would like to say that since we've been back in school, we've had a really, really smooth school year. We're looking, we're looking at doing, kind of changing up our instruction and our curriculum, and we're looking more towards a STEM or a STEAM type of curriculum. We've visited a couple of schools, we're still on ideas daily. We had a large group that attended the Ron Park Academy, which is, I've had several, they'll tell me it's life-changing. Now, what I want to see is, I want to see it be life-changing for our students. So we're in the process of working through that. We received a grant, I'm not exactly sure the dollar amount, I'm thinking it's $3 billion. The computer science that was written by this crazy tack that do actual works from BitSource, so they are sending a group to Pennsylvania, to the South Bay Ed School System, which is a STEM school from kindergarten curriculum to the 12th grade curriculum. So we're hoping to get a lot of information there, and next summer they'll come back to us. Us and Pikewood Independent, we're the only two districts that received that. So that's a little bit of an exciting time for us, yeah. But again, outside of that, we love what's going on with our kids. I know Mr. Rowe touched on test scores, and we can't discuss test scores right now, but I bet there's not a person in this room that's not heard me preach that test scores are not the end-all-be-all anymore. We're not here to educate the test scores, we're here to educate kids for opportunities. And as we move through things, if we're doing the right things in the classroom, we're taking care of business, then our test scores will be okay. Bottom line. But thank you all for giving me this opportunity. We're going to get finished up with the meeting here, we've got several things we'd like to talk about, so I will talk, give you all my thoughts.
I need a motion to receive the superintendent report.
I'll make the motion.
I need a second.
Second.
Second, any opposed? Motion passed. Next is receive utility report for Adams Middle School. Does anybody have any questions regarding the utility report?
Once again, I'd like to thank Greg and his men for all that they do. I know that they work diligently at keeping the cost of all our utilities down, and I would like to say thank you.
And I'll say the same thing. We're in the process, I've discussed with some of the guys, we're talking to some of these energy-saving companies simply as an opportunity, but what they'll do is they'll take the savings that you have and put roofs under buildings, or whatever, whatever kind of maintenance issues you may have, and we have three buildings that need roofs. Very bad, badly, I should say. But as we look with them and talk to one of the companies, our, because our concern was how you're going to affect our set points, because sometimes we like to call and say, the custodians of Floyd Central are burning up tonight, they're even carrying up a little bit. But they assured us that they had gone over Mr. Adams' set points for all the heating cooling in the district, and the lights on and on, and they say the savings that they will provide us won't be from that, it will be from changing all our lights to LED lights. Yeah. So that, again, that reiterates the job that they do with energy saves.
Thank you, Greg. I need a motion to receive the utility report.
I'll make a motion.
Rhonda makes a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Second, any opposed? Motion passed. Five Cs, consider approved still bids for transporting material for Betsy Lane High School baseball field project BG number 19-9222. I need a motion to approve.
It looks as though it's agency construction, if I'm correct.
Yes.
Mr. Adams, that's the lowest bid?
$60,000.
And the material is actually given to us. Appalachian fire, it's a material, so all we have to do is pay transport fees on that. It's about $3 cent every mile, and it's a cubic yard, and that's real cheap.
Mr. Adams, how soon is this going to start happening?
I'm, I'm, I was just getting ready to ask Mr. Adams, we have to start the next day or two. Well, Kevin, well, I've just told Kevin, we need to walk that KDE and see if we can get a little rest.
What we have to do is, if the board approves this tonight, we'll need the board meeting minutes and all the bidding documents that you had. We really want to be involved in this portion, but we can assist Greg, we get that uploaded, okay, we'll do that for you all. We'll get it uploaded to KDE along with the construction document approval, the BG1, BG2, and BG3 that's already on your agenda. Get that all at one time, and then I will make some phone calls and say, look, guys, this soil is ready to move, and see if they'll give us prior approval instead of letting it sit. You know, we want to do it as quick as possible.
Well, I now notice, I came down the road today, that somebody's taking some soil or something, they're giving it to somebody. We certainly don't want to miss out on it, and I think there's quite a bit there, but we don't want to miss out on it.
I agree. So we'll do everything we can, and I can promise you.
And in that process, if you need anything from us, you be sure to let us know.
Yeah, because I may ask Danny and Mr. Adams to make a phone call to Rhonda or Rhonda Don, Donna Don.
All right. I need a motion to approve agency construction.
I'll make the motion.
I need a second. I'll see. Second, any opposed? Motion's passed. Next is consider and approve revising BG1 for Betsy Lane High School baseball field project. Does anyone have any questions regarding the revision of BG1? I need a motion to approve the revision of BG1.
I make the motion.
Motion, I need a second. I'll see. Any opposed? That motion passed. Next is to consider and approve BG2 and BG3 for the Betsy Lane High School baseball field project. Does anyone have any questions regarding BG1 and 2? I mean 2 and 3, I mean.
I think Kevin has.
Kevin? Motion, I need a second.
No signal.
Any opposed? That motion passed. Next is to consider and approve BG2 and BG3 for the Betsy Lane High School baseball field project. Does anyone have any questions regarding BG1 and 2? I mean, 2 and 3, I mean.
I think Kevin has.
Kevin?
If he wants to show board members as far as the layout and design of the fields.
He does.
While we're waiting on Kevin, I do want to thank Mr. Greg Adams, too. His guys have been instrumental in making the move. We are, we're still at 100% at the central news central office. Finance, I think, is looking to come around October 1st. We thought they would be there this week, but they keep opting out because they get in the middle of, well, it's payday, we're going to get paydays out, and we can't do that ad move, or it's audit, we can't do audit.
Yeah, according to the audit, so now the audit's over, right?
As soon as, yeah, they're ready, I'm telling you.
They're physically not there anymore, they'll be done probably in a bit, but it's okay.
Okay.
But yeah, she finishes writing her shakes tomorrow for board, then we finish paying her all of this, that little bedtime, October 1st, you see?
It was good one night.
Kevin?
I appreciate the opportunity, we, as quick as possible, we've got a lot of things going, and I give you for not being over there to try to run this thing.
That's all right, thank you for being here tonight.
Oh, thank you for allowing the opportunity. Just bringing up speed, what you're doing tonight is grouping the BG1, BG2, and BG3 and the construction documents. Your agenda doesn't say the construction documents, but it's part of that process, and if the agenda could reflect that, the motion could reflect that, that'll help us with KDE. Construction documents and the drawings, BG1, 2, and 3, very simply, are the backup information KD needs to deal with, so that they can process the information through that process. Where we're at, Belco's been working diligently on their drawings and so forth, their site survey, and I know it's difficult to see here, the grading and topo and everything. One of the things to orient you here, I want to show you right off the back, is the way this is actually laying out now, and you can see here, and I think I'm going to just slide down to the actual grading.
You're going up the hill of Betsy Lane.
Yes, as you come up.
Big hill is on your right, and hopefully it's a little bit. But then it'll look like, well, technically, you look back towards the rock.
So what he's saying is, is this your entrance road here that goes up into your parking lot, okay? The field's oriented right to your right, and looks into the hill, and there will be a rock cut there. It's not as large as the rock cut that we have 200 and some feet over Floyd Central, but it still has that same appearance, it's drivable around the perimeter, you're going to have access to that, to that area, very simply, parking will be over here, in this area, and then you'll be able to drive or walk across over here, the utility vehicles can come across, if you've got an emergency, the gates are open, and they can come through and drive through for ambulance service right up there to that ball field. We also have, this is all, they like to do a lot of drawings, I want to come down to, real quick, kind of show you the layout of the actual, not too far. Here's along the porch. Your bleachers, your press box are located just like the one you have at Floyd Central. You have concession stand with toilet rooms and with a mechanical room as well. That concession stand has an open window here, so that we can see everything that's going on, on the field, so that the workers inside can still watch the game. They will serve from this side, and I'll show you that shortly, they'll be able to serve coming here at the window there. Twelve rooms are on this end, to kind of orient you. Home, baseball's here, that's their dugout, visitor dugout's here, and you have two batter cages, or the pitching mounds, or the bullpens, one for visitors and one for home.
There's storage at the end of the home dugout, right?
And there's storage, a 12-foot storage room at the end of the home dugout for equipment, two double doors to get things in and out of there as well. And here we go. So if you're looking at that concession stand, this is the window I was talking about, where they can see the game and film and play. Here is the window where they'll serve out of that window, people come up, get the food and so forth there, then you've got entrances into the mechanical room, into the concession stand, and then the toilet rooms are on this side of the building, here and here, both men's and women's, typical construction, masonry, so you have the durable masonry, partitions in there, and the hollow metal doors and frames, and steel doors and frames. It won't be the flimsy little plywood or the particle board or any of the wooden type Looks of it, we're going to use a, for a budget, here we'll have a through masonry, color masonry, in other words, it's a solid color masonry built in there, we'll color it to the block, so you don't have to paint it, interiors will be painted, it'll be two-toned to match the red and the buff that you've got on the new building, so it all ties in with. Metal roof on the thing, on everything there, just sections, some details, the press box is also here, the dugouts, you can see the dugout here that we were talking about, has the additional storage on the end. The fence that comes across here in front of this is out here, a lot of times you see the dugout right up, the fence right up against the dugout, and you've got a lean rail. Tom, Thomas has put a lean rail right in front of that to keep them from holding on to the chain link fence and trying to lean on that fence, much better condition there by having that lean rail. So we've made some improvements here on some of these items on this project. So, we're just asking for approval, construction documents, BG1, BG2, BG3.
And referring back to the field, the infield will be the third field?
Yes, the turf, the turf in there.
Which is another improvement.
Yes.
We make them towards central.
All right. I need a motion to approve BG2 and 3 for Betsy Lane High School baseball field project.
I'll make the motion.
Junior makes a motion, I need a second.
No signal.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Next is five F, is to consider and approve the fiscal year 2020 final working budget. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening.
Pretty nervous.
I hope, I was going to say, this is your first time actually doing it all by yourself.
Well, the last time, you know, it was like six or seven people.
Yeah.
I'm going to tell you one more, Superintendent, tell me, you'll get used to it.
Yeah.
That's what Brady told me, he said, you'll get used to it.
Oh, Brady, you gotta do that, I'm starting. So I guess we'll let you decide how it's, and if anybody has any questions, and, you emailed it all separate to us, so.
And the power point as well.
Yeah, we have the power point, so everybody should.
He's got it. So, we'll pull it up on screen.
Go ahead, Jason.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, Brad, Brad.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sliding over here on a.
Oh, yeah.
It's on this long moment, please. What's the power of document hand tool?
Final working budget.
Oh, yeah, I'll save it here.
Okay, so just to brief all reviews, we're going to go over the estimated revenues of the beginning expenses and investment. Your beginning balance for fiscal year 20 is $6,638,854.29.
What was it last year?
Last year, beginning balance was $6,225,824.8. Now, the expenses were $413,313.81. Just a breakdown of your revenue sources, your local revenue is the property tax and motor vehicle tax, and that's all budgeted based on the current landlord first rate.
Well, and actually, our new approved rate went from 69.2 to 69.1.
69.1.
I don't know, so.
But we should give the same.
Yeah, we'll still give the same amount of revenue in, but tax voted.
Correct. Your revenue from state sources, that's your state vocational transportation and telecommunications tax. Your revenue from federal sources, that's your Medicaid reimbursement, and we also get reimbursed for headshots, a portion of their salaries and transportation that we paid for the general fund, and then your other receipts, and that's our other revenue, that's indirect cost when you pay service. And the next page is just a pie chart, shows you, you know, how, how those revenues lay out. The revenue from the state, it looks a little bigger, because in that revenue, that's your on-the-half payments that the state gives us, so those on-the-half payments are $13,485,700. Just to mention two, state, we're still in the tender phase of state, we've not got a final state yet from KDE, so still right now, we are less than $27,327,90 for state, which is the lead for estimation, or $493,460.
Did the transportation, did it go down also?
Yes. Approximately $280,000 in transportation, and a thousand dollars. So that's still a ten, that's what we keep placing.
And an hour and a half ago, I'm still not sure exactly, as day was, for the district, we've been up between 50 and 55 cents. Shouldn't see a lonely priest every morning.
Okay, so overview of the expenditures. All staff associated fringe of budget at 1%. And also, with 1%, that's the longevity, the staff increases in the salary scales. All operational costs, fuel, utility per budget. Section 6 budgeted at $100 per student. We have section 7 funding in the budget of $150,000, and that's due to be allocated to schools. Supplies, interior services, travel, for all systems with prior interest being included. And at this point, the general fund, the general fund contingency is at 4.01% for $1,922,349.85.
That's good, so we'll have the state requires. State requires a 72%, so we're at over 4%.
So, that, that's all season. How much for contingency?
Then how's that compared to last year?
I think we were under 4% last year, just barely under 4%. We were just a little bit under 4% last year for convenience of 4%.
Matt shows about 4% every year. And bear in mind, that's Matt Wyrm's.
Calculations.
Calculations.
He's been with me side by side.
Because he's a notorious math, and say, well, we may get a little extra here. That's why we're not, we don't show $6,636 in contingency or whatever it was.
You probably show a lot more.
Yeah, we've got a few things stuck here and there for arrangement.
I was thinking like last year, it was like 3.9 or something like that.
Yeah.
He didn't want to show 4%.
But one of the things, and I kind of recommend that, if you're showing that you, that you've got an 80/10% contingency, everybody wants to, well, we're spending money.
Yeah.
But I can tell you, from where I just came from, one bad year of tax collections, and that $6 million, that tax collections can kill you.
Which I think our surrounding districts, I don't think anybody close is close to even having a 4% percentage, you can see our surrounding districts, so we're very fortunate to be such fiscal sources.
Just a breakdown of how the expenses are by time, you know, that just shows you from your salaries down to other items. As far as benefits, retirement for the classified employees, that went from 21.48% to 24.06%, which was a 2.58 increase. And again, the 1% pay increase went to all employees. And also, just to give a breakdown there, just as what for salaries fringe on behalf, just to kind of break down what each of those codes are. Your 0300 codes, that's your professional services, consultant, legal services, security, auditing. Your 0400 codes, that's repairs and maintenance, vehicle leases, contracted ground services. Your 0500 codes, that's your insurance, online networks, telephone services, and that's tuition for early college and travel. Your 0600 codes, that's your instructional supplies, electricity, gas, diesel, technology supplies, computers, health supplies. 0700 codes, that's your fixed assets or any items that's greater than $5,000. 0800 codes, that's our debt service, which is our KISSA payments, and then bus trips are in there. And then last, this is 0900 codes, and that's the cats match, uh, pets match in the general And that's just another breakdown, just to kind of show you how the expenditures lay The next is just expenditures by function. Of course, you've got your instruction. Your 2100 codes, which is your student support services, that's your attendance, guidance counselors, health services. The 2200, which is instructional staff support services, that's technology, media, office of instruction. The 2300 codes, that's community allocation, your school board, superintendent. 2400, which is your principals. 2500, your business support services, is finance and personnel. 2600 is your maintenance codes. And you've got 2700, which is transportation. Your 5100 code, just that service, like I said, that's your KISSA payments. And then 5200 is your cats. And then last is basically just a breakdown of the whole budget by fund. You've got your Fund 1, which is your general fund, which is what I was over, is basically your general fund. Fund 2, all of our grants, title money, title 2 money, year up, all of our state federal local programs. Fund 21 is our district activity account, which is a SWP account that the schools send the money to the, to the district to have, what's up to building and spending those funds. Fund 310, that's your capital outlay debt service. Fund 320, that's your building fund, which is a 5 cent levy, and that's also for debt service. I don't have it listed, but Fund 400, that's basically just a flow-through account, that's the debt service fund where all our debt service is paid, and then we transfer it to either the capital outlet for the building fund. Fund 51 is your group service, and Fund 52 is child care. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions from the board members?
I'd like to say thank you to funding department, they did such a wonderful job. Anything that we've asked of you all this year, from the 1% raise to any information, you all have been on top of it, so thank you, everybody, appreciate the drive, what you've done, it's really was a job.
No questions? All right, then I guess we'll approve the budgets. I need a motion to approve 2020 working budget.
I'll make the motion.
Junior makes a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Like everybody to take a look at Act 557, which is in the six, be six A through six Does anybody have anything that they need to pull to the space? Junior, do you have anything?
Uh, no.
Linda and Rhonda?
No.
Then I need a motion to approve six A through six Q.
I'll make the motion.
Junior makes a motion, I need a second.
No signal.
Linda, second, any opposed? Motion passed. So next we'll move on to executive session. Here's the notice of Floyd County Board of Education pursuant to KRS 61.8101F. Give notice that Floyd County Board of Education intends to conduct an executive session at this regular, called meeting, regular, called meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel matters. Motion to conduct an executive session at this regular, called meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel matters. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Linda makes a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Second, any opposed? Motion pass.
Motion passed. We'll go to executive session.